Make sure he's not sleeping.
Well, when I do.
Well, you know we're family there.
I do the same thing when I get there.
Well, it's six thirty, so we'll be back in regular session. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nothing included with the informational reports this time through, so plenty of minutes to catch up on to probably here in the near future from various committees. Item six is announcements and praise. I'd like to take a moment and pray real quick that everybody wants to join me. Heavenly Father, sovereign Lord, give us wisdom and hope comes from you. We submit our prayers to you and just appreciate your faithfulness and forgiveness. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. We have printed subset A included in the letter, included in the pack is a letter from the chamber. Veronica, you want me to read that or you want to come read it or should we?
You can read it.
I'll read it. This goes, "From Sturgis Area Chamber, Dear City of Sturgis City Council, on behalf of the Sturgis Area Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center Staff, Membership and Board of Directors, please accept this letter as our wholehearted thanks and praise to the City of Sturgis Public Works Department for continued assistance on several recent chamber events and projects. The Public Works Department, especially Rick Bush, has been instrumental in helping us design and construct a new welcome center sign at our facility. This sign helps guide visitors to our office for information referrals and activity regulations. It is one of the first impressions upon arriving to our community. We are thankful to Public Works for helping us make it a great one. Additionally, thank you to Rick and his team for their continued assistance transporting and setting up equipment and supplies for our year-round chamber events. We cannot host events like our Northern Hills Egg Fest, Community Appreciation Picnic and others without them. Their entire team is always willing to pitch in no matter what the task. Please accept our thanks and praise for these hardworking city staff." So appreciate that Veronica for sure. Segues seamlessly into just praise to the City of Sturgis and hosting the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally. The last three to four weeks and even beyond that, the city has been overwhelmed with visitors. We run a pretty lean crew. We keep our city breaks safe and clean and just there isn't enough words to describe what our departments and what our department heads pull off with limited resources and just make our city a great place for people to come visit and come back again and see us. So just true praise for everything that city staff pulls off over the last, I mean through the entire year, but during the summer and this apex in August, obviously their workload is grand, so wanted to mention that. This Wednesday is Community Appreciation Picnic. One of the things the chamber hosts downtown through Rally Point, five to seven, free food for anybody who wants to come down. People volunteer their time for the community and city staff and as many people as possible to help serve and just a great event. Just say thank you to our community for opening our arms and welcoming people to our town and making the rally a great thing for people to come visit. Couple of the notes I have is we have closed Labor Day, which is nine-six, I believe, which moves our meeting on that Tuesday, which is nine-seven. On Tuesday, the first meeting will be for September. And also the thirty-first of August through the sixth through Labor Day is the Sturgis Mustang Rally going on here in town. So no rest for the wheelie, but another great event and brings a lot of people to town. Anybody have anything to add to announcements and praise?
I have an announcement.
Go on up Devon.
Requesting. I guess Fay could be asking this too, but the United Way Cabinet of Sturgis, we're having our month of caring in September and we still need projects. So anybody out there, if you're watching this on Facebook Live, we really need people to step up and say, hey, I need a new, you know, what would you say, ADA compliant something on my house or I need, I need my house painted or I just need some bushes cleared out or anything, you know, and even city projects. We're looking for, for things to do and we have some church groups too that want to step up and, and as a group, do that as a project for the month of caring. So if you know of anyone or anybody out there, just can they call the city? And just let, let them know that they have a project and that we have teams that'll work on it. Also, just, just like we said, that starts, or that'll begin in September. It used to be just one day, but now we have a month to do it. So please let us know and we'll get things accomplished.
Thanks Devon.
You bet.
Anything else, anybody?
I just want to say a special thanks to Chief and all our local PD guys and all the officers who came from around the country to help out with the rally, especially this year with all the added variables of open containers and COVID. So thank you guys for all your hard work and keeping us all safe.
Thanks Angela. Anybody else? Item seven, the city managers report, so I'll turn it over to you Angela.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I know that there's a lot of questions and a lot of anticipation for the final rally report, which includes estimated attendance as well as the profit and loss and also charitable contributions and the economic impact of the rally. Just want to let everyone know, as in years past, those numbers will be available in October. We'll be doing our post-rally summit in October. The reason it does take that long is we actually have to, we gather numbers from a lot of different sources, including the state, Mount Rushmore, other entities like that, and it takes quite a while until all that information becomes available. But once that's together and put together, we will be presenting it in October. And so that information will be available somewhat soon. And then in addition, I can report on our sales tax. These are for the sales tax collections that occurred through the month of June. Month over month, the two percent general sales tax, we were up 1.9%. For the year, we are up 13.3%, so that's for the first half of the year. And then the triple B, the tourism tax, month over month, the month of June, we were up 28%. Year over year, we are up 44.7%. And again, I just want to caution everyone that 44.7% every month is going to decrease. And that's simply because there were several months in early 2020 when several tourism-related businesses, including restaurants, were closed. And so of course, this year when they were not, it skews things quite a bit. And so don't be alarmed when every month that percentage keeps falling. That's just going to be natural. But without a doubt, sales have been incredibly strong throughout Sturgis, especially in the tourism sector, but across the board in every sector. Just about any business you talk to in, in town has had the best year that they have ever had. Moving on from that, payroll changes. We do have several payroll changes. Almost all of them are for rally temporary individuals. We do, of course, try to have them included before the rally, but typical in any year, we do have a few people that drop out before the rally, so we end up hiring a few people a couple of days before the rally or two days into the rally to fill some of our empty slots. In addition, we do have some changes in our library. We do have some new individuals that are joining us and then Kathy is also switching roles within the library. Other than that, are there any questions?
Thanks Danielle.
Thank you.
I've made this consent calendar. We have A through G tonight. We have some minutes. We do have some action, including airport hangar, federal funds action needed, setting public hearings, multiple of those, and then also a consumption only permit. Does council wish to remove any of those items and discuss them individually? A through G? How about anybody in the public wish to remove any of those consent calendar items and discuss them individually or ask questions individually?
Mark, can I just ask, what does consumption only permit? What is a consumption only permit?
Consumption only permit is, allows for no sale of alcohol, but they can be drank on the property, the city's property. It's illegal to do that without the permit or an open container or a special events license. But there won't be any sales is how it's different. It's just a pure consumption.
So it accommodates our extended area that you come out with a drink? Is that what?
Just the, just the rally point on this one.
Okay.
For the, for the reception, just that rally point. Without any being removed, is there? Go ahead Mike.
I think I'd like to hear about item C. The bike race, the grinder. We need to discuss the potential problems with the street closures. I also simply need to discuss item F a little bit. And I'm not too sure about everything else in the night calendar.
We're just setting a public hearing on those. Do you have a motion in there Mike or?
I'm hoping for discussion on C and F.
So the other two moved to approve?
Agreed.
Got a first by Mike to approve consent calendar minus C and F.
Second.
And a second by Jason. Any last discussion or any additions to the removal items? We do have some minutes, so we'll go ahead and roll call Jason. Start with you.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
I'm yes. Kevin.
Yes.
Angela.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Consent calendar minus C and F where it is approved. Item C is the grinder race. This rally event, Sturgis not present tonight, but it's like Danielle's trying to pull some information out.
Just for the public, the reason I asked for that to be called is the original, everything kind of sort of fits in a little better. But this is one that's going to cause us some problems because we're going to close Sherman Street for part of the afternoon and we're going to shut Lazzle, I'm sorry, Junction Avenue down. And this will slip through for the vote of the party against on the council. If they don't address these issues now, that race could be in jeopardy. And I do not want that to happen. And that's the reason I bring it up now, so you have a little extra time to work on street routes and everything else.
And I believe this remains pretty much all in town. Is that correct Danielle?
For the Criterion Race, it is entirely within the city. This was an event that is meant to replace the Supermoto Event, which is something that we held for, I don't know, five years about, five, six years. And some of the concerns with the Supermoto Event included the amount of work that it was hauling the dirt in to make the jumps and then also the cleaning of the dirt afterwards. However, caring for businesses, it was a good activity that brought people downtown. This is one that hopefully will draw somewhat close to the same amount of crowds, but with a lot less work and especially without the mess of the dirt. I have not spoken in depth with the Rally Events Department on the actual course here, but I know that that is something that we are scheduled to have some discussion on before the, before the actual public hearing on it. And so I know that there'll be more information before then. And I've noted concerns, of course, about closing both Sherman as well as Junction for the, the race itself.
Thank you.
Item M shouldn't be an issue in the theater, but.
Let's, let's back up a little bit Mike. Let's see, is there, is there a motion to set the public hearing for September seventh?
I'm in motion.
Got a first by Mike to set the public hearing.
Second.
Got a second by Kevin. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Proposed to no. No motion set. We have Mike on subset A. Not a lot in there on that one.
Subset A, there's a similar, I raised the concern. I didn't know if the parties are here or not. But if you take a close look at the details along with it, we, we have, it's a beautiful built trailer. And it's a tiny home, but it sits in the air three feet. And I'm not sure that's the bit that we want on Main Street at one of our keystone tourist points. It sits, it will sit directly across the street from the Motorcycle Museum. And even though it's off-season, you would not believe the number of people that stop at that museum and go through that year-round. Skiers come down here to go through that museum. So I'm concerned about the positioning. If it's, if it, if it continues on this north and south mission, a place like North and South versus East and West, it will be even bigger to try. I think if we can get the parties to, to consider moving to a, maybe they can get property. I don't know. But if they move to a east and west orientation versus north and south and drop it to the ground, it would be an addition to that location other than maybe some, some people would think it's possible. I saw, I bring this up now just so that the council's got time to go to go look. Consider it. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. The young lady's not going to be very happy with me. But I think it's, it has to be what's best for our community in our Main Street. Main Street is finally starting to be developed and, and being utilized the way I remember thirty years ago. You don't want to do anything at this point to disturb that, that plane. Anyway, but that, I have proved to approve setting the public hearing.
We got a first by Mike to approve subset A. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Mike, I do want to, before you hold on, I think this one, this one I think is over by the Catholic Church Cemetery.
F is.
Is where F is.
I think you're talking about ten B.
Yep, you're talking about the one further up, I believe.
Oh.
Yep, you have further down, further up on the actual public hearing.
Further.
Yep, well, yep, that's okay.
I circled the wrong one.
But we have a motion for F to set that public hearing. We got a first and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Proposed to no. That public hearing is set. Item nine is approval of the claims. Pretty seven digits, 1.4 million or something in there. Awful lot of bills to pay and we haven't had a meeting in quite some time, so. Any questions on those claims?
It's not the claims, I just didn't make it around the corner with the address change.
That's further up in the, in the reports is what Mike was talking about. It's ten B is what he was talking about.
Oh, okay.
And public hearings, yeah.
Okay, I was going, oh, to the beginning, okay.
Yep.
And I wasn't finding it, sorry.
No worries.
I can't read the whole night in party. Actually, that's the wrong question.
Any questions on the claims, public or council? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the claim.
Got a first by Dave.
Second.
We had a second by Aaron. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the claims, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Proposed to no. Please note unanimous, Dave, for a roll call. Brings us to ten, which is public hearings. Subset A is a consideration of closure and streets and open container for the Mustang Rally. This is Resolution 2021-39, was included on the dials here as we came in this evening. I guess as a summary, it's basically the same thing that's always been done with the Sturgis Mustang Rally. It's the fifteenth year of the event. It has evolved over the years, but this is very consistent with the last half dozen years for sure of what's gone on, so. Any specific questions, we'll sure do the best answer, but. Questions, comments, concerns from council on use of city property, closure of the streets and open container ban lifted?
Yes, I have a question about the open container. So is this one open container going to be on the north side of Lazzle too? It's the usual one, the usual.
Which is basically Sherman Street to the crick is basically where it goes to is the standard boundaries.
Yeah. These are the boundaries and this is essentially the same boundary that we use for Music on Main, Kmart Rally and this. Yep. I think those are all the.
And how that first developed a long time ago Angela was because they wanted a larger area. It's actually Chief Bush, even back when this first started, said, you know, having a larger area is easier, so please don't have to worry about the line and just people can flow and function within the event itself, so.
I thought about the usual, okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
So you're saying Sherman Street to the, you said the crick, is that what you said? I don't have a.
It's not quite the.
Deadwood Street.
Deadwood Streets, yeah.
Deadwood.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right, got it. The little, the little chunk on the north side.
Any other questions concerning public hearing subset A?
Are they allowed to cross the street with drinking hands?
Yep. The entire boundaries are allowed to have open container.
Right, but Lazzle is out of the boundary.
You, you are able to cross Lazzle Street with an open container. You're not allowed to stop in the middle of Lazzle and start drinking. But you are allowed to cross Lazzle with a drinking hand. It's the same as Deadwood and other communities that have a state highway.
Any other discussion, public or council?
I move to approve.
Got a first by Kevin to approve.
Second.
Got a second by Aaron. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Proposed to no. No motion carries. Subset B is our East Main Street 970. Mr. Smith's got our staff report. Welcome back Dave.
Pretty silent the first time. Background information on this, the applicant. Tracy Hand has submitted a conditional use application to operate a business from a ten-by-thirty temporary structure at 970 Main Street. Properties described as lots eighteen and nineteen in block three of Fort Meade District. Property is owned as general commercial. The owner of the property is Family Holdings LLC. The applicant, Tracy Hand, Fargo, North Dakota, is requesting to operate a year-round smoothie business from this location out of this ten-by-thirty temporary structure. Due to review of application, it may be considered for pool by the city council because the business is not associated with permanent retail business on the same property, cannot operate out of a temporary structure. And that's per Title 20315 requirements for temporary structures. And the city ordinance states that temporary structures may not be used for housing, permanent or seasonal business unless with the exemption of some Section 20316. The structure would not be exempt per Title 20316, Section C and E, which lists exempt temporary structures as being used in conjunction with a permanent retail business and being less than 144 square feet as an extension of the primary existing business that sells and vends like items in the sink, items of like nature with the permanent business or sells or vends. In the past, similar uses of permanent businesses operated out of temporary structures have been permitted through the conditional use application process. These include the coffee kiosks of 2307 Lazzle, 2216 Junction Avenue, and a mobile office that's located at 1701 Lazzle Street. Since the structure is mobile in nature, permanent foundation is not required. However, it is proposed as year-round use. It may require anchoring at the planning and permitting department's discretion. Furthermore, the building's proposed locations within the 100-year floodplain. In the case of a flooding event, a mobile structure can be moved in the case of a flooding event or anchored and lowered to allow floodwaters to pass throughout or underneath without causing any obstruction. Lastly, the properties within the downtown Overlake District were for regulations in addition to the general commercial district. These regulations encourage mixed-use development while defining design guidelines to preserve and enhance the unique character of the area by establishing special standards in addressing aesthetics, access, site development, green landscaping, parking. The budget impacts, as a new business at this location is anticipated to produce additional sales tax for the city and increase the diversity of the businesses located on Main Street. The planning commission voted to recommend approval of the request at the July seventh meeting. Staff recommends the approval of the request provided the application adheres to the Building Code regulations in relation to FEMA regulatory floodplain requirements and additional regulations imposed by zoning ordinance. And the owner of the business is here, if you have any questions for her.
And I apologize to Miss Stacy and the council. This is the, this is the portion that I was discussing earlier. Can you roll the picture down a little bit more?
Sure. Do you want those or?
Neck set. At the bottom there, okay. In the original planning and zoning package that this was approved at, it was detected that about a foot and a half lower, closer to the ground. And now we've got it on a big triple axle, I think it's a triple. And this really sticks up in the air. I'm afraid that in the wintertime, in the north and south orientation, we could have all kinds of different issues. But as far as the note on Main Street, I'm not sure that that's a temporary structure that we want on Main Street directly across from the Motorcycle Museum. They've got a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of effort in this project. And I would vote for it if we could get it set on the ground in a east and west flow to accommodate Main Street's presence. Other than that, I have an issue.
Any other discussion from council this point in time? Dave, was there, the orientation, was that discussed for certain reason? Makes more sense one way or the other or?
Well, the configuration that it's in right now, the orientation it's in right now was strictly for the rally events. I believe that there is a different orientation that is going to be utilized for the rest of the year. But that's a question for the owner, right?
Yep, please.
Hello ladies and gentlemen, Tracy Hand. Yeah, so when we, when we secured the lot space with Arlie, it was a twenty feet of sidewalk, you know, frontage by fifty feet back. So to accommodate the flow of the anticipated traffic, we went with this orientation. I know we were, you know, it would be better to have better sidewalk frontage, but with the trailer itself being twenty-seven feet long, it would have dipped into the aisleway in between us and the next food vendor. So that's, that's what that setting is all about.
So how will it set for your year-round use?
Well, with, if your recommendation is to have it, have it go east and, and west, we can get permission from Arlie to do that and that would be as easy as bringing in a big truck.
It's, it's quite large. It's, it's a home. It's a tiny home. And I'm just concerned that, I don't know how it would look on Main Street in an annual city. The only kind of would be moved would be with the Motorcycle Rally and I'm assuming you'd have to read Arlie. So this is what you get, it's what you do now, folks.
Mike, is the concern there is that this looks like a residential house on Main Street? Is that what you're?
That's exactly what it looks like. It's supported, it appears, you know, from first glance to be about four feet off the ground. It's on a triple-axle trailer. And then it goes up normal cycle house from there. So it's kind of like a house that sits on a basement that's out of the ground three feet. So it's, it's big. I don't know how else to explain this. If that's a pretty good picture of how big and what it's going to look like on Main Street, right across from the Motorcycle Museum. And with that, I bring it to your attention because there will be. And with that, I bring it to your attention because there will be citizens' complaints about it. We, we get them all the time. Even from the guy at the party on the corner. Uh I mean, I've got a hundred complaints on, on that guy, but this brings people to Main Street. So anyway, I know you did a good, you did business during the rally. I, I don't know how many hundreds of dollars I spent there myself and didn't even show up.
We appreciate it.
All my daughters were going crazy down there.
So how far is it from the sidewalk?
Uh currently it's set back, I believe, five feet.
Dave, aren't there ordinances in the downtown overlay district where things have to be aesthetically pleasing and fit in? I mean, is there something that they would have to do to make it look nice and not make it stand out like something that doesn't fit or look the downtown?
Well, this and what planning zoning uh discussed and as well as everyone in my office discussed is that having a full-time business operating out of this brand-new building. Uh yes, it was a tiny, it was designed as a tiny home originally, but or manufactured like that, but it's built as a, a, a shop inside a retail establishment for this type of business. This and in whatever orientation it is, in our, I'm just, our assumption is a whole lot better than Charlie's across the street that's open for twelve days. So um you know, trying to uh have a, a new business. And I know that Tracy and her and I discussed, this isn't a forever. This is, this is a starting point. They're looking for a permanent home on Main Street. That's where they wanna be, but this is a starting point. I guess I didn't think it was aesthetically, no one in our office thought it was bad. You know, I mean, it's not like, it, it's not like sticking out like a sore thumb like some buildings that we have on Main Street.
I guess I didn't, I didn't even know it was there already, so I didn't drive by to look at it, so. But just with my concerns, I don't know what it looks like if it's that high off the ground and whatnot if it does.
It's, it's approximately three feet off the ground right now. They did skirt it with some lattice. Um that was for, just as a temporary for the rally. Um their front steps don't meet code. Um we've already talked to them about that. Uh that will come into compliance more like with the pictures that were depicted with the landing that's required. Um but if the council wants them to do something more aesthetically pleasing um to the building, by all means, throw it out and we'll make them do it.
Dave, as a use on review, is this something that would be reviewed again or is it, once it's done, it's, it's over and it can be there for thirty years?
The conditional use permit is, is good for one year and it's reviewed every year just like um the coffee kiosk at um the hardware store on Junction, the coffee kiosk that's out at the, like Pizza Ranch out there. Um she built a nice new building that's a temporary structure that's out there. And that one is, is tall. Um you can see that one and it's a, it's a nice looking building. And they're building a new one to replace the trailer at On Junction Avenue. So it's more aesthetically pleasing, so. But yes, once a year is when these are all looked at.
Through planning and zoning.
That, that starts in our office and if there's no complaints or no issues that have come up with it, then it gets put in the SIP that is coming up for review, uh gets put on the, on the planning and zoning agenda that this one's up for review and if they have any concerns, they can discuss it then. Generally, there isn't any.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, direction?
So when you're learning full-time, uh how is your business? I mean, people come up the steps, come in, order?
It would be, it would be like a.
Set up outside right now on the rally time.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So then you go inside and order?
Correct. Yep. We have an order counter and a TV menu display. It's, it's a mini version of all of our other brick and mortar locations.
Okay. And how many goes to you?
Uh six.
Well, there's certainly doable sort of landscaping, sorts of things that could be done that would make that elevation seem less.
Putting benches in front of it or something, I guess, kinda like that. Yeah, and during the rally, we did, we did purchase some, uh I would call it like a, a lawn chair kinda thing, the, the cute little plastic seats. So we had those sitting out in front and that hid, you know, some of the lattice and tried to make it more approachable and comfortable.
I'm just following up with Aaron's question, Mike. So is your only concern is orientation?
I want it to look good for Main Street.
And so the orientation?
The organization would help, setting it on the ground would help. If it's, if it's gonna be a year-round, it could be put on dollies, setting on the ground. I mean, I've moved granaries a hundred thousand times in my lifetime. I just don't think it's a good fit for Main Street setting on a trailer. With people trying to crawl up two and a half, three feet. Maybe if there was a patio along the front of it setting east and west uh with umbrellas and stuff for cyclists and everybody to sit on the ball, it'd have a, a better atmosphere. I just don't think it's conducive to the, to the environment that's already pretty existent, even though it's an empty lot.
Tracy, is it capable of being moved onto the ground or is it fixated to that trailer?
It is attached to the trailer. Yep. The, the whole intention was that it would be a tiny house that would be mobile so that it could be moved to one location or another. Yeah, it is a heavy trailer. It's, it's massive. Um we accelerated build-out on the, on the project to make sure that we got it into position um 'cause we took some really good advice from Zidgone members, uh Mr. Mike. And they said, if you expect to come in on Thursday before rally and get into position, you're dreaming. So we took that to heart and um yeah, just tried to accelerate the, the building and everything. So the lattice, um it's not my first choice. Uh the stairs that are there and talking about the, the landing at the top, the stairs that our builders sent us were half that width and very rickety and we thought, no way, no one's going in there. We're not high-jumping into the thing during rally. Um yeah, so for, for the rally purposes, we really tried to make lemonade out of lemons. Um a few setbacks with the building as a whole. Um it, it's always going to be my preference to have a, a regular brick and mortars site. Yes.
So I'm assuming that you're just waiting to see, I guess, how successful it is? And then opportunities for a property that's.
Correct.
Priced right.
Correct.
To make something like that go.
Right, right. Yep, 'cause, 'cause while I was, while I was here for rally, um made a lot of, lot of connections. Um got to meet Dave Wilson, um my friend Michelle Chenoweth. Um made another couple of business connections in town. Pop my head in, do what I do and I just, I just poke my head into places and start conversations of what do you, you know, what's the tattoo place doing when the tattoos are done? Who owns this? Who owns that? What are the options? Um, not a lot of options. So, but, but what I do know, what I do know is that communities like Sturgis are the exact kinda communities that we like to, to go into. Um our very first location had been in the southwest suburbs of, of Minneapolis-St. Paul area. Um rent was high, a lot of competition. We traded that location for, like I said, six locations in North Dakota. I think our rent rate, cumulative rent rate for those is still less than the site that we paid for in Minnetonka. Um communities under twelve thousand, fifteen thousand are great because the, the communities are tighter knit. Uh they're more loyal, there are fewer choices. Um and usually those choices are typically not revolving around healthy, you know, healthy options for people. Um so yeah, we, we just wanna make it work somehow in Sturgis and, and quite frankly, in western South Dakota.
Is decking it a possibility?
Um poten- potentially. Um knowing, knowing that the intention was that it would stay mobile, um I wonder about the long-term use of a deck?
But it was moved.
Do you, do you mean?
Removed and moved. I mean, mobile homes do it all the time.
True. Um yeah, it was, it, it hadn't been in our, in our horizon to create full decking like that.
If you go back a couple photographs, you'll see the, the, the actual landing, what it should be like and in front deck right there. And you'll see they've got a couple of benches protected outside. That's probably more of what you're looking at.
Say, Dave, uh I'm kinda surprised we haven't seen more of this in the community only because we have an awful lot of vacant space and uh, you know, a few meetings ago, we listened, listened to Amanda give us a briefing about how many businesses are looking for places in our community. We've got lots of discussions about use on review and appropriateness in, in, you know, in neighborhoods and whatnot for some pieces and that, you know, maybe these sorts of uh business pieces would fit our mobile need. I mean, 'cause a lot of these places, they wanna set up their business for the rally and they have to move things in and out. Um I am surprised that we haven't seen this more. Um I have a question though, as far as ADA, is there, is, is there a need for that when we, when we have these sorts of things? And I'm not trying to pull this particular one out, but uh it's more of a general question about how we can make these work in the community.
Yeah, as far as ADA compliance in a permanent structure, yes. In a temporary structure, uh there is not. In this situation, the operator can go down to that person, take the order and deliver it to them uh similar to the coffee kiosks. Uh in this case, so it's not a drive-up. So uh the ADA compliance is not required in that temporary structure type situation like a, like a food truck. Uh that we have, that we allow thirty days a year to be in, be in town. So they pick their weekends and come in. And yes, you are correct. I mean, there, even though there's empty spaces and locations on Main Street, no business likes to have to move out when they can make the best money during the rally. Um and it's a pain, trust me.
Well, even if they wanna move, the, the quick move, not pick everything up and load it into a trailer, it's, you know, it's a week before the rally and a week after. Would it be an option to uh, you know, I have familiarity with mobile homes, I guess, to remove the tires and to address Mike's issue of lower it without removing the axles? I mean, that might bring it down a foot, wouldn't you say?
You know, one of the, one of the things that's uh unique about a mobile structure, especially where it lies in the hundred-year floodplain, is that FEMA looks at it as, as a mobile in nature so that any floodwaters can pass through or you could hook onto the pickup and haul it out of there so it's not flowing down blocking something. Uh so doing that and tying it down, yeah, probably. Then where's, that's gonna be up to between the Tracy and the landowner on orientation. I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Becker would say, yes, it's okay to orientate it this way for the rest of the year, but that one month of the year, I gotta make more, more space so you don't turn it. I mean, unhooking it, whaling it back up and moving it. And it might, it might be more, more trouble than it's worth for. And like you said, this isn't, when Tracy and I talked during the rally, this is not what her forever home is for the business. This is a start. You know, and she has been looking and making contacts, trying to find a permanent, more permanent location for her business on Main Street or in town. But they are, even though there's empty buildings, they're few and far between for an affordable permanent location.
I guess my thoughts would be that, and, and I respect Mike's opinion on the height of it, it does seem tall for the area. But I also feel like if it is somewhat of a temporary review every year, we let the community speak for that as well. And if we get the issues and, and comments, um you know, take the good with the bad there. And we review that after a year instead of making them incur the cost of wrapping a deck around it or whatever it may be. I'm sure you're gonna do what you can do to make your business an attractive place to bring people in. Um my opinion would be to, to let it ride as is and we will review it after a year and based on public input and input surrounding businesses, we can form a decision from that.
And one thing I would, I would ask the council is if, if you do get any, if complaints on, not like this one, but any other one, to get me involved so I can log it so that when it does come time for the reviews, we've got them as there and it just doesn't hit us at a council meeting that I received these ten complaints from these citizens and we don't know anything about it. So I would ask that, please, if that happens, let me know so we can log it so that when we go to planning and zoning to bring it back, we've got everything logged and who it was.
I, I agree completely with Dean. I think, you know, we've got some safeguards here in, in relation to a year down the line to see, like you said, what kinda complaints we have. I think this would be a logical thing, go ahead with it as it is for right now.
Yeah, I think what Dean says is a good compromise, you know, try to offer your sample as well.
Motion to approve. Second is reviewed. First by Dean, we have a second by Dave. Any further discussion, public or council?
Yeah, I'm gonna answer. I'm gonna do this for him, that's the point. You said Dave, you didn't have the opportunity to go through your adjacent property owners to do a minute flight? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they, they were notified.
I, I understand, but you didn't go through that with the council. And the reason I bring that up is 'cause I have issues with the kinda way that we do the landowner approve, disapprove of it. Like this council recommended an ordinance review of that and so every time one of these use on reviews comes out, I'm gonna be telling you about that. You had one yes vote and six people had voted, they actually had one no vote and six different property owners didn't even have a chance to respond. I guarantee you.
Ten of them. Ten of them actually.
Ten?
Yeah.
So I guess what I'm saying is, we're gonna hear about it. We're gonna hear about it. And that's that, now I can go back to those people and put it on them. You didn't wanna take the time to check the card and send it in, now live with it. That's exactly the way I'm gonna approach this. But I want Daniel to understand that we have several ordinances. And I, I wanna be on the ordinance, the new ordinance committee and it means we need to have an ordinance committee. This, this dug by legal and finance in a vacuum and then pretty soon we get, we have to vote on ordinances. This is the type of stuff that has to be fixed by the council. Anyway, I can off my soapbox.
We have a first and a second on the floor to have.
Counselor, would that include a change of the orientation for east-south and then a, a um, a, or east-west, sorry, I'm not sure what I said. East-west and then also um the stairs and landing, the appropriate code or as depicted, that are restriction?
Right, in my opinion, my proposal would be that there would be a landing in proper compliance steps. Um orientation could stay as is. That's where, in my overall, I would say that relying on her to make her business is attracting impossible as possible.
Got credit there? Daniel? David, do you agree on my understanding? Any last discussion? All those who favor the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Proposed to no? No. The motion carries and those are made. Item eleven is reports. Subset A is requesting me on the agenda. Jessica, I believe this here.
Yep, I'm here.
Come on up, Jessica.
Hello. My name's Jessica Davis-Liden. I'm a resident nurse at Fort Meade. But my most important job is, I have, no, hold on. Is me and his mom. Um and he had a very difficult birth and as a result of that, has multiple disabilities. One of them being a brachial flexor injury, so his, so his right arm does not work very well. So I'm here um in hopes that we can add some more inclusive swings at our parks. Only one park in this town offers a disability swing. And I think any park that has swings ought to offer, you know, he should be able to go and swing at any park that has swings. Um and I know it's not just me. I, I know multiple people myself that have children that can't swing on swings. He's still swinging in the baby swing and he's four and a half years old and he's a big, big dude. He's a tall boy. So it's just, it, it doesn't work and he shouldn't have to go to one park over and over in this town. town when we have, you know, six parks at least. So that's what I'm here for. I don't know what else to say.
Well, I think one thing as far as historically how things are handled when we do build new parks, I do know that there's some requirements and some planning that goes into it if you want to make ADA's. So that's why the one is a relatively new park that has it.
Right.
I think retrofitting or taking existing structures and making them ADA is much trickier than just attaching the new outlets and calling it good. I think there's some different things after going to that. And I do know as we do add things and change things and build equipment, that that is certainly something that we want to make part of all those ones. So I guess, over time, I think that that truly is the plan. It's just something that does take some planning and some new equipment, some probably new parks to get those, but.
I don't think we need new parks. I mean, I've done kind of the research, I don't know, like height-wise, I think, you know, like eight-foot chains, ten-foot chains, but the Rose Street Park, my mom lives right across the street, so that's where I could go mostly. It has two in the baby swing, so I don't know who would be able to find out if we can just get like one inclusive swing, you know, next to the baby swing?
They have to be put on their own, the manufacturer will not stand behind them unless they're put on their structure. So you can't take an inclusive swing and just put it up on somebody else's frame. It has to be the one the manufacturer sells.
Their frame, that comes with the swing.
Yeah, we do the plastic ones like Spirit Fish Park, it's got a big old concrete metal ones. Thirty years, I lived across the street, that park has no.
Yeah, the new ones are not.
I think it's very important, you know, for children in our community to feel included. And I don't think if he's gonna grow, that he can feel included.
And there's a special needs home just down the street on Sherman Street, special needs kids.
And what I also was told, or she was told, that this town can't accommodate everybody. And our youth should not be anybody, they should be a priority. You know, we come to the rally, it's hard to be talked about, I'm sorry.
Well, I think you for bringing this to our attention, and I think this is something that could be an ongoing thing, but we want to make sure that we don't forget about this. So we continue to have a discussion within the city council and with city staff to see how feasible it is and how quickly some of this can be done, and perhaps some of this can be done. I would kind of venture this, and I hate to say this, is it probably feasible that every park could have something like this? It would take a while for that to happen, or perhaps it wouldn't be possible for that to happen, to be completely realistic about it. And I'm not saying that's fair, but I'm just saying that from the standpoint of finances and so forth, because I know we looked at one thing, I think it was up to $12,000 to go and just refit things so that one swing at one park could be done. And I know that seems very unreasonable, but that's kind of where we're at. Am I correct financially on that?
Yes.
$1,000 for one swing?
Well, it's not just that, also whenever you do ADA upgrades, you have to include the sidewalk that goes there as well as the curb paths and everything else, so it's not.
How come Spirit Fish and we don't do that?
They're in violation of.
They're in violation then. I mean, there are communities that are sued for ADA violations continually.
So not having a frame, is that a sin or a law?
Whenever we make upgrades, we're ensuring that they're up to ADA standards. But we can't just piecemeal things, it has to be an all-inclusive package. You can't have an ADA facility but not have an ADA approved or sanctioned way to actually get to that facility.
Is there a problem with us starting our own GoFundMe or Raffle?
There's a combination too that I know.
Is that a problem if we say the city Sturgis can't do this?
It's not that we can't, we're looking at it with the Main Street, the Sherman Street reconstruction. There's a lot of other moving parts that have to be compliant, and when we redo those streets, that would be the time to put in the sidewalks and things of that nature.
Sidewalks to the swing is about the same.
Yeah, you can't have an ADA swing if you can't get a disability.
Like wheelchair to a swing? I can get somebody to do that for free. We have a concrete man that helps me.
Not just saying, thirty years I put a class. I would think that this would be a priority in the slide, which is thirty years. I grew up at this park, this Rose Street Park. One new piece of equipment in thirty years, one.
Ridiculous.
And this is where we pay all these taxes, we hold this big huge motorcycle rally. Where does our money go? It should go to our youth. It's important. At our elementary school, there's nothing, he can't go to school. I'm not gonna have him be a left school day at school, because there's nothing he can do at our public school.
No, like I said, I would say that this is not gonna be ignored, I don't feel that it will be ignored, it will be ongoing discussion. And can I, can anyone just make a promise that something's gonna happen within a matter of months or by next spring? No, we can't, but we will not forget about this and we will consider doing whatever we can in the future.
You know, Mike, you can kind of go along with that mindset about not forgetting about it, but let's, at this point, let's take a look at what the problems are, what our options are. And again, it may be something that's not feasible to fix immediately, but at least at least have an understanding of what we're talking about. And we've had a lot of conversations, there's some stuff that's going on in different communities. Let's just get all their information, and then maybe we can start kind of looking at what our opportunities might be. But, you know, don't disagree with you, man, we've been here for a long time, and really we are trying to make this an inclusive community across the board. Now, there are sometimes constraints, but ultimately, we have one, maybe the next goal, two, and then work from there. But maybe there's an opportunity here from a community ground swell, talking about some, a group of people that might want to get involved, so I hate to put this underneath the carpet here, I think we should take a look at it and see where our options are.
I understand.
The other avenue that we're getting to the council is we have a grand new, we have a grand new foreign parks committee that will be allocating resources for the next year, and perhaps during their meetings, you should attend the parks board meeting.
Absolutely.
And bring it to their attention.
Okay.
And they're the ones that can cause a shift in funding.
Okay. How do I find information on those?
Oh, you just.
City search my site?
Yeah. They're really the ones that, in the past generations, it's always been a parks board that set the priorities of what was replaced, what was fixed, what was set to the side. We have nothing part of that, it's not the council action. Parks Board brings it to we act on it. That's the way the protocol should work.
I haven't had good luck with the parks department at all.
I understand, but we got a brand new one that's all surgized, so let's use them.
I asked the parks, I asked the parks department, this is a few years ago, to, but we can feed on the park so that my yard could look at as decent. He said, I'll buy bays if you want to do it. Yeah, I'm a widow, what can I say?
Well, I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think it's very important that we know what's your thinking and what perhaps other people in the community are thinking, and that's step one as far as going forward with something like this.
Just think if that was your grandchild and you could only take him to one park in this town.
I understand, yeah.
Pooch Park is?
Yeah, Rose Street.
Yeah, but which one is the one that?
The one over by the community center. And that's the new one.
The new park.
Well, thanks for your input, we'll continue to work on this.
Thank you, very thank you.
Subset D under reports is consideration to approve the school professional service contract in forty-six dash one for the school resource officer, Mr. Anzley, you with the staff report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The police department last year was able to receive grant funding through a federal Department of Justice grant that provides three years of funding for a school resource officer. That funding is not a hundred percent for that school resource officer, it's a diminishing amount each year. The first year that we have the officer, the city paid the entire cost of that, and this, trying to develop or hire an additional police officer for our schools has been something that the school has asked for for at least six, seven years that I recall. And so we were successful in actually receiving the grant that helps to pay for it for three years. And so now this is kind of following through to have the school district help assist in paying for that. What the agreement calls for is that, that the entire cost of the officer for nine months, the nine months, when a school is in session, would be paid for by the school district, the other three months it would be paid for by the city. That's not the entire cost of the police officer because a large portion of that cost is also paid for through the grant. But also as a portion of the grant, the city has to acknowledge and realize that the ongoing cost for that officer for two years, I believe, at the end of the grant has to continue, so we can't lay off the officer after three years. The school district has agreed to it and they have passed this professional service agreement that, or where the school pays for nine months the cost of both of the school resource officers. So one of the school resource officers is pretty much dedicated to the high school, and the other new school resource officer is dedicated towards the middle school and the elementary school. This now has been included as part of the proposed 2022 budget that's included in your package for consideration tonight. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council? Any public discussion? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve.
First by Dave.
Second.
Second by Angela. Any last discussion? Public or council? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? Motion carries. Subset C is to approve the lease for joint use of a cash sharing on Little Field. Just brings it back to you, this has been a multi-year process. I want you to speak.
Thank you very much. This item is for the lease agreement with the school district to use not just Little Field and the athletic facilities next to it that are used primarily for track and field, but then also the parking lot that is directly south of Little Field. If you might recall, the city actually paid for half the cost of paving that parking lot in twenty twelve or thirteen, somewhere around there. The school district paid for the other half of that. This agreement would continue saying that the city is responsible for the care and maintenance of the parking lot with the cost being split fifty-fifty between the school district and the city. And then the costs for the maintenance of Little Field as well as the shot put area and places for the field sports and track, that would be the responsibility of the school district. And so the city would still continue to own the land, but the school district would be responsible for the maintenance of it. The facility would also be available for community use when it does not conflict with school activities. So traditionally, you'll see a lot of local residents that rent bleachers there or run the track, that sort of thing, that would be able to continue as long as it's not in conflict with school activities. Are there any questions?
How good is this lease for, is it twenty twenty-five, is that correct?
Thank you, right. Let me check. Twenty twenty-three?
Okay.
No, no. December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. As the mayor said, it's taken some time to get some of these done. So hopefully now that they're done, it will be easier to redo them in the future.
Previous discussions a decade ago was, they needed to take Sly Hill to it, they didn't believe that, so.
You're getting out of well there?
No, they're up to water.
Any other discussion on this kind of track for the school district or lease agreement? Public or council? Is there a motion? First by Dean, second by Aaron. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? Motion carries. Subset D is consideration for lease of property next to the wastewater treatment facility, the new one. Back to you, Mr. Anzley.
Thank you very much. When the city began construction of the wastewater treatment facility, the city was able to get a temporary easement for approximately two acres of land that's immediately next or adjacent to the treatment facility. This was land that we were able to use for staging and other things like that. You can see here, it's the blue area on the screen. Now with the completion of the project, it would be beneficial to continue to be able to use that portion, those two acres, we'd use it for parking and other staging during the operation. The agreement would allow the city to make some improvements to the property, including fencing, as well as high gravel and different things like that, just to make it a little easier to use, but it would continue to be owned by the school district. It's important to note that the school district really doesn't use this property, it's not part of their, you know, operations of the high school or anything like that. This also has been presented to the school board and they did already approve it and it's already been signed, along with all the other documents that are on my desk. Hopefully tomorrow we'll be able to sign this one.
Any questions for Daniel on this lease agreement?
Yes, is the orientation of that picture east and west?
North and south.
The top is north.
So, you know, looking at it, anybody that would look at a map would say we're on Glencoe Campground. That's the reason I asked the question, because the picture is oriented north to the top. So what is our access point to the north?
That is BLM property.
Yeah, the BLM is this area up here. And so the road that comes around here loops around and that eventually leads out to, it's Glencoe Road, that's by Kick Start Gas Station in Lancaster.
I just wanted to make sure that I was looking at it correctly. And that we weren't doing something that's gonna get us in a bit of trouble in Glencoe.
No, this land is owned by the school district entirely and they've agreed the lease up to the city.
They've had their motion already?
Yeah, actually, yeah. And this was requested by the city to be able to use it too, so.
This, the contractor obtained, it was part of the agreement, the C Mar agreement, they obtained the initial lease for it as a laydown area, and then they built fence and stuff because of the cattle grazing, and we just requested to not have to move the fence again, leave it as is and we take care of the property.
And our public works director has also taken several of the school board members out on a tour of their, I'm not sure all of them, but I think several.
The land and.
Youth committee or?
And the school superintendent.
Any other discussion? Public or council? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
First by Aaron.
Second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? Sign some contracts tomorrow, Daniel?
Hopefully in about three weeks, you guys can come out there and see it for yourself.
Look forward to it.
We're getting close.
Subset E under reports is first reading of ordinance twenty-two-one dash oh-five. This is the budget for twenty twenty-two, so Mr. Anzley, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just to give everyone a, some overview, highlights here, I promise everyone, and I promise the department heads will not be going over each of the individual numbers. It turns out, Ben and I like looking at the numbers a lot more than everyone else, so we'll try to do this pretty quickly. So to review Sturgis' current economic position, we have unprecedented residential demand. It's amazing to see the number of individuals that are trying to move into our community, which has been very positive. Within the city limits of Sturgis, current homes that are listed for sale that are not pending or are not taking contingencies, as of this morning, there are a total of eight homes that are for sale in Sturgis. One home is at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, the others are two seventy-nine to three hundred, and then three twenty-five to three fifty, and then four hundred thousand plus. There is tremendous demand for individuals to move here. Every day I hear people call City Hall and they either live in Rapid and want to live in a smaller community, live in Spirit Fish, they would like to move here, or they're moving to the Black Hills area, several of them. to the Black Hills area, several of them work at Fort Meade, they would like to live here. There's a lot of demand to move into Sturgis. That honestly has been a marked difference from what it was 10 years ago. To put this in perspective, it's a 0.2% of single home availability is what that term is used for. A healthy market usually exceeds 1 to 2% of homes are currently, or should be made available in a healthy market. Our population growth, the previous decade from 2000 to 2010, our growth rate over that 10-year period was 2.9%. In 2010 to 2020, our newly released census figures showed a 5.9% growth rate. Almost all of that growth came during the last five years of the decade. Not surprisingly, that's because it took us five years to get several subdivisions approved. Then once the subdivisions were approved and started to be able to go into construction, our population started to increase. If you look, there were very few subdivisions that were approved from 2000 to 2015, hence very little growth. But that also shows the continued growth that the city of Sturgis is going to have because of the subdivisions that have continued to be approved by the city. When you talk with the owner of the trailhead subdivision, those 23 units, I believe, all of them are under contract and I believe one so far has been completed and that has been sold now and is finalized, the other 22 are under contract and just waiting for all the rest of the materials to be shipped so that they can be finished. If you look at the Davenport subdivision or.
Davenport.
Yeah. Yeah, Barn grow subdivision, same thing type of the developers there. I believe every single lot that is in the cul-de-sac have been sold according to the developers there and then the majority that are along the roadway have been sold as well. The Hidden Hills subdivision, last I spoke to the developer there before rally, I think they said 16 of the, oh, it's higher now? That was a few weeks ago, are under contract. And so a tremendous amount of growth in our community and a continued demand for people to move into our community. One of the great stories that I think coincides with your item 10B that you were looking at is our downtown business renaissance. I won't say which business owner it was, but in discussing an item that had been brought forward by the Downtown Foundation, the business owner wrote back and said, "The business environment in downtown Sturgis is better now than any time since the 1970s." And this is the owner that's been open since then. And to hear that from this business owner just a month ago, I think is fantastic to hear that that's how much activity we're starting to see in our downtown. If you look at year-round businesses, that's the first chart here, you can see the number of year-round businesses operating in our downtown over the last 10 years have increased, has increased from 30 up to nearly 45, I think it's actually 43. That's an increase of 43% in the last 10 years. It's a substantial increase. And so when people talk about that they can't find buildings, this is one of the reasons why, but that's actually a positive thing, showing that we are getting more downtown businesses. In addition, when you look at the number of seasonal businesses, this is really kind of one of the unsung positives that has occurred, is that several of the businesses used to only be open for two weeks during the rally and now more and more of them are open for three and four months. Our seasonal businesses have increased by 333% in the last 10 years. Looking at rally-only businesses, that number has fallen greatly. The number of rally-only businesses have fallen by 46% in the last 10 years. That's significant momentum in our downtown that is leading to a difference in our sales tax numbers that is providing you guys more resources to make the changes and investments in our community that you're trying to. In addition, I wanted to note that actually the number should be even better, other than three year-round businesses built new, larger sites, but they were outside the downtown core. So there are three businesses that used to be year-round businesses in 2011 that were included in here, that now their sites maybe are vacant in the downtown, but it's not vacant because their businesses closed, it's because they actually expanded in Sturgis and had a larger site. Flex Fitness, Black Hills Laundry and Black Hills Energy. These are some of the new and expanded businesses since 2015. The difference between the ones that are bordered in yellow and the other ones, the ones that are, I thought I closed wrong, I'm sorry. The ones that are bordered in yellow are ones that the city has directly assisted, either through a loan, a facade improvement loan or through a TIF. When you look at it, that's almost half. And so if anyone asks, "What has the city of Sturgis done to help assist new business growth?", this is a significant number of new businesses in our community. These are not all necessarily downtown, but some of them are, they are in our community. The ones on the right did not necessarily receive any direct financial assistance from the city, but they, many of them also received variance requests or definitely worked with our planning and permitting office. When you look at the number of new businesses, that greatly exceeds the number of new businesses that came into Sturgis in the previous 10 years. Looking at our financial position, again, very happy to note that our bond rating, which a bond rating for a community or for a state is similar to a family's credit rating, our bond rating has increased four steps. It went from essentially a triple B plus to a double A minus. It actually would be higher now, although we no longer have any bonds that are outstanding that are, that are rated. And so that's a good thing, that we don't have any of that debt anymore, but also it means that unfortunately we don't have more current rating, which honestly would be nice, we would probably be one or two steps higher. But that's again, significant improvement. Our savings accounts, if you look, these are our five largest funds, they are the five large operational funds of the city. If you look at the cash, CD and loan advances, so kind of the net available assets that those individual funds have. When you look at the general fund, the, the green column that is on the left of the general fund, that is the recommended reserve, which is 20% of your expenses for the year. That is recommended to have available so you can respond if there's an emergency, if there's an economic downturn, whatever the cases might be. For the city of Sturgis, last year, it should be right at about 1.7 million. Right now we are, as of the end of June, we are hovering just under $400,000. So it's significant improvement for us as a community. Again, if you look back in 2010, 2011, we most months would have a few hundred thousand dollars that would be available. So significant improvement there. Same with our water fund. Our municipal utility board has made a conscientious effort now to ensure that we have adequate reserves so that now when we are doing projects for our water fund, that we are able to pay for those projects out of cash. In the past, we've taken out a loan every time a new project was needed. Now that's no longer really necessary. And so you'll see every few years, the cash balance will go down, but that's because we did do a major project with cash. And then it'll take a couple of years for it to be built back up and then it'll go down again. Our wastewater fund was stable and it has increased dramatically the last couple of years. That's not an oversight, that was part of our financial plan so that we were able to build our wastewater treatment plant. This is really kind of a high watermark for where that fund is going to be. We have more, about $2 million or so that is going to be paid, that will reduce that line from just over $4 million by the end of this year, it'll probably hover somewhere around $2 million. We believe that for the next couple of years, we'll continue to erode that slightly until it'll be able to be approximately at an equilibrium some, somewhere around 2024, 2025. And then at that point, we should be able to start increasing slightly that balance as well. The sanitary fund, that now with the changes we made to the rates back in January of this year, we are at, close to a stable position in our sanitation fund. Again, we continue to really struggle with that. When we make increases annually of about 3%, our cost structure in that fund continually increases more than 3%. One of our largest expenses is the city of Belle Fouch and that's because we haul all of our garbage all the way to Belle Fouch and we dump it there. And so when they charge us 5% more and we charge our customers 3% more, we increase our deficit every year. And then in addition to that, when fuel prices increase as much as they have been and then the cost of our, our trucks continues to increase faster than 3% a year, it causes challenges. With that being said, we did make some significant changes in that fund in January, but with that being said, we are still the most affordable sanitation bill of anywhere in the hills, including private haulers or any public haulers. Our ambulance fund has stabilized, it's still negative, the cash balance in it, so in other words, our ambulance fund at the end of the year will take a loan from our general fund or our water fund to, to make it even. And then at, in January, that money will be returned back to the other funds. But it has largely stabilized. It actually would show significant increase if the accounts receivables paid by, or due from Fort Meade would actually be paid, usually they have a balance of somewhere from 50 to 70,000 dollars, now it's close to about 200,000. It was up to nearly 300,000, but they have started to make some payments, but they have been incredibly slow. And if we actually received everything, that Fort Meade owes us and you would see a substantial improvement in our ambulance fund as well. Our city's property tax, that has been a very long-term goal of the city, starting back to 1994, that was kind of the, the bad years of property tax. The city at that point was just about the highest of the state, our tax levy, it was $10.72 for every thousand dollars in that value. Since, assessed value of a property since then has continued to decline, there's been a significant decline in that tax rate over the past 10 years. I do want to note that everything in this presentation right now is an estimate to the property tax because we do not have the exact final valuation yet of the assessed values, we can only approximate that. It's going to change slightly up or down, but it's very close to what the final amount will be. If you look in the last 10 years, growth or new construction has increased our valuation by almost 10% and also annexations have increased our valuation by 3.5%. So if an individual will say, "Well, the main reason why our taxes have fallen so much is because valuations have increased," that is a part of it, absolutely. As valuations increase, then the, the, the percentage will decrease. But by, by far, the largest driver has been our new growth as well as our annexations. That have helped to spread the cost of municipal government to a larger number of taxpayers. By doing so, you're able to spread those fixed costs and able to reduce the overall cost. In addition, what has been very good is that as a community, we haven't had to rely nearly as much on property taxes we had in the past. If you look back in 1994, almost all of the city's general fund revenue was coming from property taxes. Now, and we have a slide later on showing that property taxes every year continue to fall as a percentage of the total revenue coming into the general fund. In fact, in this proposed budget for 2022, we're reducing the amount of property taxes collected from the public by 134,660 dollars, that's a significant reduction. We're paying for that from other revenue sources. So individuals, actually we'll get to that later, but that's the same amount that was collected in 2013, so that's substantial improvement. It's a total reduction this year of 16.6% in the mill levy, which again is a substantial reduction, especially if you include what it has been for the past several years. Looking at how we're able to reduce our dependence on property taxes, a lot of that can be said in this slide here, which includes a para, or two paragraphs from our comprehensive plan from 2009. In, in the comprehensive plan, it said, at that point, again in 2009, on an average rally, the city of Sturgis made about 300,000 dollars. The goal that was laid out in that comprehensive plan at that point was for the rally to net to the community a million dollars. We now have reached that, that for the last several rallies, the community's net has been essentially a million dollars. Some years higher than that, including the 75th, that was a fantastic rally, other years it's about a million dollars. That has made a substantial difference to us as a community. It's enabled us to rebuild our reserves, it's enabled us to reduce our property taxes, it's enabled us to invest a lot more in infrastructure. In addition to that, our sales tax has grown dramatically. A portion of that is because internet sales tax have occurred, which in the past it was not done. But beyond that, having a growing community and a growing number of retailers and also a growing number of tourism events, they're bringing other people into our community to spend their time and their money in our community has made a substantial difference. And I think at this point, it's important for the community to note, a department that is really assisting in our sales taxes, one that people may not necessarily think of, and that's our police department. Our police department started to do things during the rally time for sales tax enforcement, I believe in 2013. And at that point, it was amazing to see the reported sales tax that came in from the rally, I think nearly doubled that year. That's a substantial difference for our infrastructure fund as well as for just our general operating costs. In addition, the increased efficiency and effectiveness of our liquor store, next year we are going to be transferring $381,000 from our liquor store. Again, to put that in perspective, in 2008, hosting the entire rally, all the disruption, all the headache and everything else that came from the rally would generate about $300,000 for us as a community. Now our liquor store is doing better than that. In addition, our development-related income is up 359%. So our planning and permitting department is entirely paid for through contractors' license and building permits. In fact, they actually return money to the general fund. If you look at most planning and permitting departments or community development departments, they actually require property taxes to help do their operations and maintenance. That department actually returns money back to the general fund. In addition, our interest income next year is going to be $445,000. Again, that's 50% more than what we made hosting the rally in 2008. That's a substantial difference for us as a community. One of the reasons in 2008, we had so little interest income is because we hardly had anything in reserves. You have to have something in your bank before you can actually receive any interest. But beyond that, now that we've built up our reserves, we're able to invest in our own infrastructure through TIPS and with that, we're actually earning nearly a half million dollars a year in interest. So looking at the sources of our general fund, if you look back in 2010, 37% of, of the revenue required to operate the city came from property taxes. Next year it'll be 28%. That's a substantial improvement. That's how you're able to reduce your overall property taxes by as much as you have. Also, you can look, rally income, sales tax, everything that we've talked about have made a big difference. Also though, I think that underlines the importance of those things, making sure that those things continue. So when we look at making sure that we're having tourism events, I know sometimes individuals say, "Well, why do we have to have more tourism events?" Well, the Mustang Rally, the Camaro Rally, trying to develop additional things that occur in September like the gravel grinder, that makes a difference for a lot of the businesses to stay open longer. That also generates more sales tax revenue for us as a community. Those are the things that are making the significant differences for us over a longer time period, that you're able to see, you know, kind of the, the more marked differences. Those aren't necessarily differences you see in one year, but over three, four, five years, that success starts building off of another success and you start to see the significant differences that you want to hopefully achieve. Some of the highlights of the 22 budget. For capital improvements and equipment, $200,000 will be invested in the Boulder Canyon Bike Trail, that will be ADA compliant and that's one thing to enhance our accessibility of the community. You do see a lot of individuals now that are actually walking along gravel and just broken ground, trying to get to the heart of the community. Now there's going to be a nice trail that is going to be available so that people can get there. In addition, $700,000 to reconstruct Moose. That construction's likely going to occur in '23, but it's going to be funded in 2022. in twenty-two. Also reconstruction of East Main and East Sherman that the Public Works Director was talking about, that will be constructed in twenty-three, but will be funded in twenty-two. Again, to have that much money going to capital improvement projects, if you look back ten years ago, it was quite common that in a year, we might have two or three hundred thousand dollars that we could spend in capital improvement projects. Now we're spending more than a million dollars a year in new capital improvement projects. A hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in upgrades at the Armory and Community Center. Those are both facilities that we've been making substantial upgrades over the past five years. And I think you're starting to see a difference in those facilities, especially the community center, with the number of new members that we're starting to have there. As we're making investments there, we're starting to see more people participating in our youth sports, as well as just becoming members of the community center. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars has been allocated for some improvements and enhancements at the dispatch. Hopefully, it's not going to end up costing that much, but that's a partnership with the county, as well as other cities in our county. Thirty thousand dollars for new mowers and four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to purchase two graders. Outside agencies, increase SEDC's contribution by fifteen thousand, increase the Chamber of Commerce's contribution by ten thousand, continued contributions to the Sturgis Charities, which includes five percent of the rally sponsorship income, and twenty-five thousand dollars just in dedicated set-aside funding that comes out of the mayor and council budget, and also potentially up sales revenues if councils in future decide to continue doing that. Personnel, there are some significant increases and raises in our part-time personnel. That has been something that we have not been doing very regularly for the past several years. The reality is now, a lot of our part-time personnel are paid less than they are at Burger King and McDonald's, and so we do need to compete with that. This budget does include raises for all of them. Also additional seasonal employees for parks, as well as rallying events, as we're doing more and more activities, which are important for our quality of life as a community, as well as being important for to draw more tourists to our community. The reality is, we need some additional help during those busy months. But in doing so, we need to make sure that we're paying employees a decent wage so we can compete with some of the other businesses in our community. And so there are some additional seasonal employees in rallying events, but it is at a higher pay rate. In addition, our police would have two school resource officers and one community resource officer. Mid-year, we would hire a new mechanic to assist in maintaining our fleet at a better standard. And then in addition, for all of our existing employees, a four point five percent COLA, which is fifty percent higher than the contract. But again, I think that's showing the commitment that the council has to our employees, to make sure that our employees understand that they're appreciated and that we remain an employer of choice. And to finance the budget, we have water, wastewater and sanitation minimums, which would be a cost of living increase of three percent. It would not increase the surcharges. It would also not increase the per gallon rate for water. So this is just the monthly minimums. It would reduce the city's mill levy by sixteen point six percent. Again, that's an estimate. That final number we'll know in a couple more months, but that should be pretty close to what it is. And we often are asked, you know, if you reduce it by sixteen point six percent, my property tax bill did not, was not reduced by that much. Why is it, you know, is the city lying or something like that? You have to remember, your actual property tax bill is based on what your assessed value is. So if your assessed value increases year over year, that will make a difference, as well as, I think it's very important to note, that your property tax bill does not all go to the city. It also does not all go to the county. In twenty twenty-one, if you look and owner-occupied property, thirty-three point eight percent of your bill would go to the city of Sturgis. The county would receive twenty-two point six percent, and the school district would receive forty-three point six percent. So the city council only controls that thirty-three point eight percent. It, so that is a small portion of your property tax bill, so that's the only thing that they're in control of. And the changes that they make make a difference in that portion, but not necessarily in your entire property tax bill. In addition, one of the long-term goals of the city council going back five-plus years has been to make the city of Sturgis in the top two or three most affordable communities in the Black Hills to live. This is a chart that we look at every single year, and it's a chart that looks at an estimated one hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed home in seven different communities in the Black Hills. And we look at what the city tax rate would be, what the school tax would be, what the county tax would be, what the other tax would be. And I think that's very important for people to understand. In Sturgis, there are no other tax, there is not additional tax districts or anything else, there's not road paving, light, lighting, ambulance, stormwater, all sorts of different districts that other communities might have. And even in some communities, that tax, or those districts are not the same across the entire community. So when we talk of Rapid City every year, it's very hard to find out what that number is because they have over seven hundred districts that cover that city. So it's hard to find out exactly what a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed value property in Rapid City would pay, but that's the average. And then also what the sewer rate would be, what the water rate and garbage rate, and then you look at the annual total. So this is very preliminary. It's preliminary in that we only know the sewer water and garbage and city tax rate for Sturgis. All of the other rates are the same as twenty-one. And that's obvious because no one else has passed their budgets, we're not sure what they're going to be. So assuming everyone else stays stagnant, which they won't, given the new numbers that are included in the twenty-two budget, Sturgis would be the second most affordable community, which would achieve that longstanding goal of the city council. And I think also what's important to note in here is that a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed home in Spearfish is not necessarily the same as a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed home in Sturgis, which also is not the same as one in Leeve. So these are not exactly apples to apples, but it's as close as we can get. With all that being said, this is your first reading. If the council has any questions, but then your second reading would be September seventh is what the tentative plan is, and then it would be published in the newspaper and going to effect somewhere around September of the year. Are there any questions?
I would just like to make the comment that actually, considering where we're at right now compared to where we were at, say, a decade or so ago, I think we owe a great deal of thanks to all the city staff, but particularly to Daniel and Fay. I think we should give them a round of applause because this is remarkable. Remarkable. And I'm going to mention one other thing that I don't think is mentioned quite often enough. A lot, most people know this, but some people don't. The amount of time in regard to rally the mayor puts in, and also the big help he is to the city financially, as far as working with the sponsors and all the things he does behind the scenes, that helps the city of Sturgis financially a great deal. And so I think he should also get a round of thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Without a doubt, the numbers do speak for themselves on what we have for where we were ten years ago versus where we are now, and it's just, we're in a much stronger position. It's due to a lot of hard work, a lot of hard decisions over the years, so proud to be a part of it. Any other questions for Daniel on first reading for the twenty twenty-two appropriation budget ordinance? Public or council. Dan, what do you have?
You talked about the growth in the community. What is our population according to the twenty twenty?
The, it was seven thousand twenty as of April fifteen, I think, if I was sensitive. Of twenty twenty.
And that compares to what in twenty ten?
Sixty-six twenty...
Sixty-six forty-two, I think.
Sixty-six twenty... It has a five point nine percent increase.
Okay.
And again, almost all of that came in the last half of the decade, so it took a long time to get housing developments improved.
May I, may I ask a nuclear question? What's the, what's the mile radius approximately of what that population sits within?
If, that's just within the city limits of Sturgis, which is, we're just under three square miles. If you look at our zip code, which is generally about a three-mile radius around Sturgis, not quite going east, it goes further than that.
And fourteen A goes further too.
Yeah. But in, in general, somewhere around a three-mile radius. I think the last report came out that that was eleven thousand some. SEDC had that exact number, but I think it was eleven thousand some.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on first reading of this ordinance?
There was paper copies up there and a couple paper copies that can accommodate the actual ordinance that will...
Be posted in the paper, yeah.
I move to approve the first reading of the ordinance, the appropriation budget for twenty twenty-two.
First by Dave.
Second.
And the second by Dean. Bonnie, what do you have?
I just wanted to say that, you know, we talk about the decade, but even, how long has it been that I've been coming to meetings? When was, when was the Atlas story?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. You know, even this last five years, the difference I can see when I don't fully understand all of it, the last five years have really been growth time and development time, and Dan, this was nicely presented and so much more understandable than the first, one or two of these that, that I sat through. And I mean, we all know that Dan and I aren't always on the same line of thought, but nicely done, Dan.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a first and a second on the floor. None being heard, all those in favor of the motion please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed or no?
The motion carries unanimously for roll call purposes. Brings us subset F of reports. This is first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh six. This is Title thirty-nine, Medical Cannabis. Mr. Marshall, I have yours as a staff report. You prepared to do that, or is it Daniel you got?
I have Daniel.
All right. Mr. Heskey, it's over to you, sir.
I think I concur with the mayor. The item before you, just so everyone is aware, it's actually two separate motions that we would be asking the council to make. One would be a motion on, I think listed first is actually Title thirty-nine, which is the, the new marijuana proportion of your ordinance. And then the second motion would be for some changes to Title eighteen, which is zoning. We have had a lot of public discussions about this particular topic. We've had some policy discussions from the council, we've had some policy discussions from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think it was shortly before the rally, I don't recall the date anymore, where they actually made some recommendations for some changes to the ordinances, so that's what's being presented to you tonight. With that being said, it has, the ordinances now have been reviewed by our new city attorney, as well as our previous city attorney, so there have been some changes made to them from the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would not say that any actually changed the policy direction of the commission, but again, in full transparency, there have been some changes made. But that's been made just to make sure it's a more legally defensible and clear document. And so with that to be said, to begin with the Title thirty-nine changes. The Title thirty-nine changes, actually going back, just so everyone is on the same page, Title thirty-nine is a new chapter of your ordinance that was adopted a few months ago. There are two sections of that. One section states that anyone applying for a dispensary license will be turned down automatically until the Department of, the State Department of Health establishes their rules for medical marijuana dispensaries. The second portion of it is a portion that states that it now is a city ordinance violation to smoke marijuana. Is it just smoking, or is it aggressive? Do I consume marijuana?
Consuming.
Yeah, consuming marijuana in public rights and ways or in...
City parks.
Yeah, city parks, and also in public areas of businesses. So for example, in, in a restaurant, that sort of thing. That those are city ordinance violations. Those previously had been state statute violations, and those continue to be violations of state statute. And I think it's very important that everyone understands that, that neither the initiatives that were passed by voters last year made a change to that. So those continue to remain violations of state statute. The city included those violations as violations now of city ordinance, just to make it clearer to the public that there is not a change to that, that is especially needed during the rally. So when we're talking about changes to Title thirty-nine, we are not talking about making any changes to that portion. So irregardless of whatever you do tonight, it would continue to be a violation now of city ordinance, as well as state statute, to ingest marijuana in public rights ways, public parks, municipal property, and places of business. I hope that makes sense. All right. So moving on to the changes for Title thirty-nine. The changes to Title thirty-nine include the licensing requirements for marijuana establishments. The state regulations are essentially setting up three types of marijuana establishments. One is a growing operation, where plants are grown, and also where there might be manufacturing of other types of products, you know, whether that's gummies or brownies or whatever that happens to be. And then a second type of marijuana business is a testing facility, so testing for the purity of the marijuana and other things like that. And the third is the dispenser. And I just want to make sure that you're aware that there are three types of licenses. That's included by the state, and that's also reflected in this ordinance that's presented to you tonight, is that there are three separate types of licenses. Previously, in some of our discussion, there, there had been thoughts about the dispensary licenses, whether it makes sense for the city of Sturgis to either own and operate a dispensary, or potentially be only dispensary, or if the city of Sturgis should own the license and then lease that out to private operators. The reality is that right now, the Department of Health is not anticipating allowing that sort of operational plan, but that is anticipated to be discussed and debated heavily by the legislature in January and February of next year. What we have heard is that, that could be something that would be authorized, but irregardless of that, at this point, that is not something we can do. And so the ordinance before you tonight does not include anything about municipal ownership of, or municipal ownership and operation, or municipal ownership at least. It solely is anticipating private sector being the owners and operators of it. There is no limitation in what's being presented to you for the number of licenses for growers or for testing operations. The idea behind that is that if it ended up being a job center and a place where more businesses could come, that it would be something that Sturgis would be open to. There is a limitation on the number of dispensaries. The limitation on the number of dispensaries that was proposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission was four. That, again, I think is a number that the council can change, but there has been a lot of discussion about whether it should be a larger number or a smaller number. It seems to be, every time I hear from either the council or the Planning and Zoning Commission, a smaller number seems to be the preference. The recommendation ultimately... The recommendation ultimately was four to you, but again, if you want to make a change, that's an area that has often been debated. When you look through the ordinance, there's a lot of, a lot of definitions. Again, just trying to make sure that it's as, as understandable as possible. The, as far as determining how someone would be able to receive a license, there is an application process that is fully laid out here. And then it's after an individual meets all the qualifications for it, then there's going to end up being a lottery. And that lottery would determine what those individuals would receive those for. That would only be if there were five or more applicants. So if there's only two or three applicants, then there wouldn't be a lottery. If they meet all the qualifications, then they would receive a license. And actually, in saying that, it's important to note, the city of Sturgis is only making a recommendation to the state on who that is. So we are not necessarily guaranteeing that if you meet all of our criteria, that you would receive a license. We simply made a recommendation to the state. With that being said, at least with liquor licenses, the state generally follows what your recommendation is. But I can't guarantee that that's how the state would handle this. That's what we've been told, but ultimately, we'll have to see how this plays out. There, there was quite a bit of discussion by the Planning and Zoning Commission about, sorry, let me get to... Number one, if, if someone is able to have a preference in a renewal, so if you've been operating for a year, whether every, every year for the licensing, whether it should be another lottery or if there should be a preference for an existing one. The reason for having a lottery every year is so that it does not become a property right, essentially that it's an owner or a property... A license does not become a piece of property that the owner is able to essentially sell their interest to another individual. That was a significant concern. So the best way to avoid that would be to place it into a lottery every year. The downside with that is that if you only have a year to operate your business, there's not necessarily going to be a, a large capital investment that someone's willing to make. If you want to make a large capital investment in the business, you're generally not going to be able to recoup that expense in a year. And so in order to try to encourage there to be more capital investment in our community, the Planning and Zoning Commission is not recommending there to be a lottery every year. So there would only be a lottery the first year, and then after that, there would only be a lottery if there's additional licenses available. So there would be a preference if you own and operate year one, there would be a preference for you to have your license renewed in year two. Does that make sense? Okay. There, sorry, I don't remember which section, but there was a lot of discussion about making sure, here we go. Making sure that they're actually open and active. There's a large fear that there would be individuals who would receive a license and then be open for, say, two weeks out of the year, maybe three weeks out of the year. Making sure that that would not be something that would be authorized. And so what is included in our ordinance, which is not included in many of the other ordinances across the state, that I think is a recognition of our unique status as hosting the rally, is that the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended to you that every licensee has to be active throughout the entire year. They cannot have more than 28 cumulative days that they are closed. Honestly, I don't remember how they came up with 28 exactly. I think there was some negotiation back and forth about how 28 came. And also consecutively, they can't be closed for more than 14 days. There is a large fear that if it's 28 days, maybe it's the entire month of February they're off. And if you're looking at it as, you know, truly medicinal, that it's something that, you know, someone should be able to take their prescription and have it filled. It doesn't really work if they're closed a month of February. And so that's why that has been included in here. There is an application fee included of $7,500, and that's an annual fee. And I think that's the general provisions. It's a very long ordinance, and I apologize for that. But we'll get into more specific details if you have, or if you have any specific questions.
Well, I guess to recap too, we're doing all this and yet when January and February rolls around and the state legislature meets, it all might change again, so.
There's a very high...
You will do this again, I'm sorry. You're probably not going to be done when this is over. This is first reading to replace the existing ordinance that is off the books in Title 39 that states no licenses will be accepted or granted by the city of Sturgis for dispensary. That's, and this is with guidance from the state as close as we can get with what we currently have. Questions, comments, concerns? Counsel or public on this first reading? Not a lottery. That grant you one? Any discussion? Anybody willing to make a motion? On first reading of Title 39?
I will too.
The second? We have first by Dean and the second by Aaron. I think plan would be for the futures to bring it back at the September 7th reading for the second, second reading of this ordinance. Once it's posted in Black Hills Pioneer, after 20 days after it's been published, then it will go into effect. So let's have the timeline laid out in front of us. We have a first and a second on the floor to approve first reading. Is there any further discussion?
I think you were smoking something, didn't you?
We have a first and a second on the floor with the way that first reading is written. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed and no?
Not standing.
We have seven, four, one abstentions, so that motion carries. We will tackle second reading as time moves forward. Subset G under reports is the Title 18 zoning aspect of the situation on where these can be located, how they are formed. But Mr. Anzey, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple items that are probably important to understand from a policy standpoint. The dispensaries, according to the ordinance presented to you, would only be authorized in commercial areas, but not the office commercial, or I'm sorry, office residential zone that is on Junction. And so generally, they would be available to open on around Exit 32, Exit 30, downtown, and Luzelle. It's kind of the, the general areas where a dispensary would be able to open. The testing facility as well as the growing operations would be able to operate in agricultural as well as industrial areas. All three of the licenses would need to operate or would need to have the security measures that would be put into place that would follow a policy that would be developed by the police department and approved by the chief of police. And so that's to ensure that there are safes, that there are security cameras at all the points of entry and exit, different things like that to make sure that it is a lot easier to recognize someone if they actually come in. And again, to make sure that they're safe because these businesses are largely cash basis and making sure that there's a place where the money and other things are actually stored and not just available for a quick two-minute type robbery. In addition to that, it does state that for... For the dispensaries, that they would have to be at least 1,000 feet away from other dispensaries. The Planning and Zoning Commission was concerned about having two or three that are immediately adjacent. And so trying to make sure that they're spread out a little more amongst the community. And also that they would be at least 200 feet away from a residential zone. That was an item that was discussed quite a bit. That's a residential zone, so it doesn't include from any other residents. And I say that meaning that if you happen to live in one of the apartments that's on Main Street, that does not mean that a dispensary has to be at least 200 feet away. But instead, what it means is if on one side of the alley is a residential zone and on the other side is a commercial zone, that side cannot have a dispensary. It would have to be across the street then so that it's at least 200 feet away from a residential zone. Just trying to make sure that there's some separation from areas that have high density of residences and cannabis establishments. And there, there's one other item that I think probably deserves a little bit of discussion. It's not included in the ordinance and it was not included on purpose. Several communities in our state will not, some communities in our state, and I say some because not very many yet pass their ordinance. So the ones that have passed them have a lot of restrictions on the type of signage that dispensaries in particular are able to have. That has been an item that has been discussed quite a lot. The restrictions usually mean that on buildings or on, you know, billboard signs or whatever else, it can't have a marijuana leaf, it can't have a joint, it can't say marijuana, it can't say bud, it can't say other things, maybe other things. But things typical of that, that there would be a restriction that you cannot advertise in that sense. That has been included in a couple of communities that have completed their ordinance process so far. The Planning and Zoning Commission did discuss that for quite a while. And I think they ultimately determined that number one, it was questionable if that would even be constitutional. We had a, we had an issue with a business that opened up in our downtown that had a sign that some were somewhat worried about whether or not it's, the language is appropriate. Ultimately, a lot of attorneys said you can't necessarily regulate that. So I think there's a question about, number one, is it even constitutional for you to regulate that? But number two, even if it is, does it necessarily make a difference if someone uses the euphemism? The reality is it's a medical marijuana dispenser. If they come up with a different name, if they come up with a different symbol, does that necessarily make a difference? And I think ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission said it doesn't necessarily make a difference. The reality is that's what it is, and so don't try to hide it with something else. Just allow people to understand what that shop would be.
Any questions for Daniel on his summary of Title 18? Planning and zoning, I know I spent a lot of time on this for sure. Public input, comments, concerns? First reading of 2021-07? Concerns, discussion, counsel?
I move to approve.
We have first by Dave to approve recommendations and ordinance as written for first reading.
Second.
And the second by Jason. Any last discussion? Public or council? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed and no?
Not standing.
Abstention noted. That first reading also passes. Brings us to item 12, other matters before council. Anything from the public to add tonight that's not on the agenda?
I got a quick PSA, Mayor.
Well, you're not public, but why don't you have a PSA?
Shouldn't have told you that earlier. Today, the DOT did start their mail-in overlay project on Highway 34, which is from the intersection of 34, 79, comes into town to about Lions Club in there. Their construction barricades go all the way down to Blatt Street. Traffic will be reduced to one lane both, both directions, both ways, except for where the highway is split. And they are expecting delays of upwards of 15 to 20 minutes. And this likely will not be done until October, I think the deadline was October period. So it will conflict with the beginning of school and the Mustang parade. I just found out today, so there'll be a little bit of planning we have to do with that.
Thank you, sir.
What's their hours for that?
Normal DOT hours. Eight to three, every day, eight to three.
In addition to that, the DOT is doing a March Luzelle corridor study. And so they're definitely trying to seek public input on that. If you go to the city's Facebook site as well as on our website, there are links to the, to the comments section. It would be very good to have individuals from the community who have comments, whether it's the aesthetics of it, the functionality of their corners or intersections of particular concern. I often hear from residents about the width of Luzelle. This is now your time to speak your mind. If you want to see changes, you need to say something.
We dropped on cards that I'll make sure that community people can pick in this 29.
So this one's taken. Two days.
Yeah.
But at this rate, it might be about one. Any other matters before council? Public or council? None being heard. I do know we accomplished all needed discussions on these active sessions, so item 14 is motion to adjourn. We have a first by Jason. Second by Kevin. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed and no? Adjourn. Number 37?